Good evening on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Redding area. I would like to welcome all of you candidates to the forum for Shasta Lake City Council. Thanks for joining us. My name is Susan Morris-Wilson and I will be your moderator tonight. The responsibilities for the office of the city council, I googled this too, include participating in the activities of the city of Shasta Lake, reviewing and approving the annual budget, establishing long and short-term objectives and priorities, overseeing performance of the local public employees, overseeing effectiveness of programs, establishing tax rates, entering into legal contracts, borrowing funds, and passing ordinances and resolutions. So not necessarily in the order that they're sitting at that table, but the six candidates for the position, and there are three open seats, and you vote for the top three will get the position. There's no districts or anything like that. So Daniel Rinwelski, close enough, Dolores Lucero, Tina Eisenbets, Toni Coats, Greg Watkins, and Janice Powell. And Janice Powell was unable to join us this evening, so I am going to read a statement from her. We accepted a three-minute opening statement. That's the only part that she will have, but that was the best that we could do under the circumstances. She had a long ago arranged thing to do and just couldn't change it. So we talked about this a little bit earlier, and I think most of you are here, but just remember, you have to be registered to vote. If you want a mail-in ballot, you need to complete your registration, have it in the office by the 20th of October. Conditional or same-day registration can be completed between the 20th of October and the 5th of November. You can register to vote on registeredtovote.ca.gov. You can register to vote right at that table in the back if you need to. Ballots will be mailed from the registrar's office about the 7th of October. Many voting sites are available prior to Election Day, and those sites will open on 10/26. You need to confirm those sites and the dates and the times because I don't have all that information. Drop boxes are open on the 8th. Track your ballot using BallotTrax. I love BallotTrax. They tell you when your ballot arrives, they tell you when they open it, they tell you when they count it. It's pretty exciting, you know? It's almost like being there. Vote by mail. Ballots must be postmarked by 11:05, and the election is certified in the county after the count is completed and forwarded to the Secretary of State for certification. The Secretary of State will certify the results on or about 12/13/2024. People go, "Whoa, that's a long time after the election." But remember that many things can happen in an election. You can do a hand ballot counting afterwards, you know, because you want to verify something. A lot of things. So remember when you see numbers the first night, those are not necessarily the numbers that will be there on Friday instead of Tuesday. I want to remind you that the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. The League, we are very into informed and active citizen participation in government. That's why we do the candidates' forums. And we like to influence public policy through education and advocacy. So for those of you who are interested at all in what the League actually does, we have meetings once a month and we talk about something interesting. The meeting that we have coming up that you might be really interested in is one person, one vote, and it's about the Electoral College and how does the Electoral College work. And I think that's an important thing for us to know about, you know, in the close election that we're bound to have this year. Tonight, we are recording our proceedings, and you can get this on @mr.micmedia96001 on YouTube. And we will have a videotape that you can look at. The videotape isn't available this moment. I mean, it won't be available tonight, but because we like to clean it up a little bit, you know, for posterity. Let me describe our format for this evening. All of the questions come from the audience, but they're picked up by the League of Women Voters folks, raising their hands. They have little cards if you need a card, and they have pens if you need a pen, and they'll pick them up after you make the questions. I do need questions. I don't have any up here right now. So make sure that, yeah, I do. I thought maybe I did. So all the questions are, come that way. We like the questions to be general so that they apply to all of the candidates, not to any particular one, and we will actually pull out one if it's directed towards a specific person. I anticipate that we'll finish about 8:30, by 8:30 tonight. There's only five of you. I'd like to do about eight to 10 questions if there are that many that come in. The order of speaking has been determined, so this is number one, and that's number five, and we'll go down and we'll ask. And then the next question will be answered first by Toni, and the next question first by Greg. So you're going to have to throw this microphone around, and you'll find that I'm going to walk down and pick the microphone up so that you don't have to, and I'll drop it where it needs to be. And we're going to have a two-minute opening, one-minute questions, answer, period, and a two-minute closing. So Janice Powell is not with us, and I do have her opening statement. Her opening statement is actually about three minutes when I read it personally, but we'll make do. So I'm going to do hers after everybody else has done theirs. So let me start with you, Dan, and we'll just pass that microphone down and go from there.
Good evening. Thank you, Susan. Thank you for being with the League. Thank you, everyone. Enid.
Hold on, hold your mouth.
All right. There's a middle ground there somewhere.
I know. I've been having the same problem here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Conditioned by a career of courtroom testimony, I am not long-winded. I've always been encouraged to answer questions succinctly and quickly, and only the question answered, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time speaking. I am, relative by some standards, newcomer to Shasta Lake. I've been here for about six years now. I'm married, I have two kids, own a house in Shasta Lake. We're not going anywhere anytime soon. I'm a former Marine. I recently retired from California Highway Patrol. My priorities are pretty straightforward, as you might expect. Public safety is going to be number one. Drugs and homeless issues are going to be up there. Managing infrastructure, water, and all well, carefully managing money. Low taxes are a big priority to me, and absolutely putting the residents first every time.
First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. This is really exciting for me to be on this side of the podium, so to speak, because I was city clerk for 15 years and a 29-year city employee. So you may have seen my name before because I've been on countless agendas and minutes of the city, as well as every business license in the city for the last 15 years. And I'm honored to be seated here as a candidate in this election. I think we have some awesome candidates, and that's exciting because sometimes in the past, we haven't had a lot of interest. Like many of you who I know really care about our community because otherwise you wouldn't be here to learn about our candidates, I too am deeply invested in our future of our city, and this is where I've built my life. This is where my family and friends are, and I want to be here to make positive impact. I'm running for office because I believe the power of local voices shaping local decisions is very important. As someone who has seen up close, very up close and personal, firsthand, the unique challenges and opportunities we face as a community, I'm committed to bringing a new perspective, maybe just a different perspective, grounded in honesty and transparency. Whether it's supporting local businesses and our volunteers, in our nonprofit organizations, or addressing issues that come before the city council, I will always put first the interests of our community and our city's ability to serve that community in the most reasonable and efficient way. I have no personal agenda. My many years as a city clerk made me have the responsibility of being neutral, and at first I thought that was a weakness and that maybe people wouldn't take me seriously because they haven't heard my voice.
Thank you. Greg.
Well, thank you. It's so nice to see some friendly faces out there. I was born and raised here. I went to local schools. I graduated from Central Valley High School. I went to Shasta College. I went on to University of Chico. I graduated from Chico with a bachelor's in civil engineering and went to work for the U.S. Forest Service. Four years later, I took a state exam, so I am technically a professional registered civil engineer with the state. With the deep community roots that I have, I also think I bring common sense and sound engineering principles to our council. And I hope that our city council will have a bright future, and at the same time, we need to maintain our local heritage and our history. I am proud to have supported this complex for our city right here. This hall, we're in the community center, the law enforcement, the city council chambers, and also the administration. We had a very poor one across the street, and John Duckett, we had $2 million windfall. And I voted to borrow $1 million to add to it to help develop this. I'm not one to really encourage debt, but I think that was very sound to do in this case. I'm also take pride in researching each issue that's come about. I have totally opposed a raw water tank that was going to add $5 a month to your water bill for the next 30 years, and because of my opposition to it, the city said, "Well, we'll try to get a grant." So I will take credit for forcing the city to go apply for a grant, and they just received that grant for $6.8 million. Now, all I need to do is make sure that this raw water tank is positioned so that in the future, it can become a more needed finished water tank. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dolores.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here because I'm actually having seen a lot of the citizens in Shasta Lake here to attend some, you know, this event. Sorry. But I am, I'm actually a business owner. My business is Shasta County Watchdog, and I also have, I'm attending law school and to get a degree so I could take my state bar test, so, because I need it. The reason that I need it is because there's so many things happening in the cities. That's why I'm actually been attending law school, because of the things that happen in the city. Nobody knows, and I could tell you right now that I'm the person who will come to you and tell you the truth, and even though you might not like what I have to say, but I'm going to let you know the truth. I moved to Shasta County in 2021, I'm sorry, 2021, and the reason I did is because I wanted a better life for my children. And I bought multiple properties, and I also been a school board member, and I also was a city council for the city of Shasta Lake. So I do want the best for the citizens. My concern is the high increase in utilities that, actually, the water rate, they just passed, all council members in the city of Shasta Lake passed a percentage of 46% to 54% for your water rate to go up for the two years. That is a concern for me because the citizens are living on low income and social security. If that doesn't wake up some of the citizens to start looking at who is on the board.
Thank you. Tina, you're next.
Hi, thank you for coming out tonight. I wish there was more of you out here, but that's okay. I'm glad that you were here to understand what's going on.
That's why we videotaped.
I know. My name is Tina Eisenbys, just so everyone understands how to pronounce the last name, and I've been a part of this community since the early 1990s. I know I did not grow up here. I did not get to go to school here. However, I did raise my son here, and he was part of the school system here. I was very much involved in that. I did move away for a while, went to Sacramento for a job, and got married. I'm now back up here. It's healthier to live up here for me, and I am very involved in the community. I was on the planning commission for over two years, and then I decided to throw my hat in the ring for city council. This is my third campaign in two years, so I am proud to represent the citizens of this community. I'm here for you in regards to what affects you most. I was the only city council member who did not, who said no to the water rate increase because I did not feel that that was beneficial to all citizens. It really only benefited about 25% as opposed to the rest that are really feeling the crunch on that now, and I know the city's been getting overwhelmed with calls. But however, I am here to fight for you in what concerns you, what is affecting you, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. You could just pass that down to Toni, and while that's happening, I'm going to read the message from Janice Powell, who is also running for city of Shasta Lake Council, the city council. "I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this candidates' forum and for giving me the opportunity to have this statement read on my behalf. I have also been active in my community and make it my duty to be available to the people that live here. I have served on the city council for the past eight years and hope that I have earned your vote to continue serving the people of Shasta Lake. I'm unable to attend the forum this evening because of a pre-planned vacation in Ventura County." She's at the Heirloom Seed Conference. How cool is that? Heirloom seeds. I love heirloom seeds. "I am 67 years old and have attended school from kindergarten through high school right here in the city of Shasta Lake. I'm currently a member and volunteer for the following community groups: the American Legion Auxiliary, the Central Valley High School Alumni Association, the League of Women Voters, the Shasta County Citizens Advocating Respect, also known as SCAR, the Shasta Damburi, the Shasta Lake Garden Project, and the Shasta Lake Heritage and Historical Society. All of these nonprofit groups are an important part of the character of our community, and I'm happy to be part of what they have accomplished. I have been employed by the Shasta Lake Chamber of Commerce as the director for the past 18 months and really enjoy greeting visitors that come into our city for information about this wonderful place where we live. I am responsible to the business members and provide resources for networking and marketing opportunities to enhance their businesses. This is the 20th year that the Chamber has hosted the popular Friday night in the park community concert series. I work hard to bring all the details together to keep this family tradition alive in our city. As part of my duties on the city council, I also serve on several commissions in Shasta County. I am a board member of the Local Area Formation Commission, also called LAFCO, and meet with other Shasta County commissioners to review and regulate local government agencies that propose changes in their organizations, including the sphere of influence, boundary changes, annexations, detachments, new formation plans, and incorporations. I have been a member of the Shasta County Community Action Board for the past two years with the goal of increasing community awareness of problems relating to poverty and developing plans to resolve these problems. Since its inception last year, I have served on the At Home Plan for Shasta County, which is designed to be a collaborative effort recognizing the local officials are best equipped to develop local solutions that work for their residents. I continue to make the point of defending our boundaries against large homeless encampments just outside our city that threaten us with wildfire and the criminal element. I believe that, as your city council member, it is my responsibility to be your voice and to represent you in matters that affect your daily living. I am always available to hear your concerns and to answer any questions you might have. Please honor me with your vote on November 5th." And that's from Janice Powell, and copies of her speech are available in the back if anybody needs a copy of the speech. On that note, Toni, you get to answer the first question first, and I thought, let's see, which one did I decide? I decided this one. "What is your vision for the downtown area over the next four years?"
Well, I know that we've had a lot of opposition, I've seen on Facebook, about the new project because seeing a three-story building in downtown Shasta Lake is kind of shocking, but I believe that this is a very valuable project and that it's going to be the impetus for other developers to want to do projects here. And I'm excited about the Red Coat project down at the entrance to the city. I think that's a really good placement for a large project, and I just, I think that the people that are going to become interested because of what's going on here right now are going to enhance our city. They're going to invest.
Thank you. Greg.
Thank you. The downtown area was really forced on us by the state. They said we have to have more low-income housing, so there are 49 units that are going in there. I think one of our priorities needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to become housing for local homeless people that really have a home here or lived here in Shasta Lake. We don't want to have people coming from all other counties and states to live in these 49 units. There's also a veterans' home that will probably be built. They just finally got the funding. It'll be 30 units for veterans that will be behind the Dollar Tree, and I think that that is a very important project that will go forward, that will really help change our community there for some of the people that really need homes.
Thank you. Dolores.
Yes, I think it's great to see the city of Shasta Lake finally growing because I've been in Shasta Lake since 2001, and finally, it looks like they're just making some changes and adding some, you know, some apartments to help, you know, the low income, but especially, I think it's great to hear for the veterans. The veterans need a lot, you know? They've been doing so much for us, and we give them so little. So I think it's great, and we need to continue to put the veterans first, and if we could find other ways to provide more things for them, I think we should look into that because our veterans are good people, and they've done so much for us.
Thank you. Tina.
Hi, thank you. This is actually one of my passions, is wanting to have more business within our community. As you can see, when you drive down the boulevard, there's a lot of empty commercial spaces. There's very few landlords that own a majority of what is available here, and I would like to see those landlords take a little bit of pride in what they do have, revitalize it, and get rented out. It benefits everyone, the city, the tenants, them. They can write these things off. I love the fact that we have a new commercial space downtown in our building that we have going up with the 49 units for affordable housing. We also have plenty of other things in the works. We have the hotel, we have the veterans' home, we've got a huge skateboard park that's going to be happening upright behind us here, as well as a pavilion. There's a lot of things that are going on, and I know that change is hard for a lot of citizens in this community who have liked the small-town feel. We can still keep that, but as we move forward, work on it together. Come out, let the city know what it is you'd like to see.
Thank you. Dan.
Yes, I was born in a small town, too. I liked the small-town feel. I grew up in a small town. I would like to see Shasta Boulevard, at least the city-owned portion of it, beautified a little bit. I'm not a fan of the low-income housing. I think the placement is terrible. I think that going forward, that needs to be maintained, and the maintenance there needs to be strictly enforced because it is very visible to anyone coming in here. And if it ends up as an eyesore, then that's what people are going to know Shasta Lake for.
Thank you. Could you pass that down to Greg? And Greg, you're going to be first on the next question. There are several questions about homelessness, and I can, I think I'm going to start with one, and depending on what you all say, we might have a second one. "What should be done about the large encampment south of Windsor Estates?"
Well, the large encampments south of here are in the city of Redding and in the county, and they're outside of our jurisdiction. We do have an overflow into here, but this is more of a county issue. We had the county people talking earlier, and I think that we need to pass that on to the county. We're kind of stuck with the people. I even heard that there was a busload of 45 people dumped in Cottonwood last week from the border, and I had one on my street that couldn't speak English. That was very concerning to me, and so I think we do need to be alert, and we do need to be aware of them, and we need to have some more jail space. When they break into something, they need to be in jail and need to stay there.
Thank you. Dolores.
I agree with Greg, but we also need to do a lot more for our community because it's been going on for a long time. And, I mean, so many people have been saying over and over that we need change, and we need change, and we need a jail, we need this to make people accountable, but how come we haven't done it? All the new board, city council members in the past, every time we get somebody, nobody works on it. Nobody does the project. But it's got to be, it's got to be done. We can't just talk about it and tell the people what they want to hear so we could get elected. That's not the way it should be. When they say something, they need to keep the word. And I could tell you right now, if I say something to you, I will keep my word. No matter what I say, I will keep my word. In other words, I will tell you, and I will find a solution. Whatever it takes, I will find a solution to make sure I keep my word because it's important.
Okay. Tina. Excuse me. So in regards to the encampment, part of the problem is, is that it is not in our jurisdiction. It is part of the city of Redding and a county issue. So as much as we would love to say we don't want to have that there, we don't have a say in it at this time. But we do have a say in going to the meetings and letting them know that we're concerned about this encroachment into or possibly coming towards our city. With that in mind, our governor tends to tie municipalities' hands in the types of things that need to be discussed. Part of that is mental health. We would love to be able to address issues with mental health with our homeless citizens, and unfortunately, that isn't always a chance that we get to have. We, as part of Prop 1 money coming in, that is supposed to help with that, but that really only helps 1% of the homeless. And I know everyone thinks that's going to be the grand gesture that fixes it all. I don't see that happening.
Thank you. Dan.
As far as the homeless encampments that are not within Shasta Lake, there is not a lot we can do as a city about them. When they do overflow, it has to not be tolerated. That's how you end all of that. If it's, it's here because it's tolerated. It's everywhere because it's tolerated. If it hadn't been tolerated, it wouldn't have grown to the point that it is now. People like to blame mental health, and there is some of that out there, but it's 90-plus percent drugs, and you need to not tolerate the drugs, you need to not tolerate the homelessness. We do need more jail space because of that, but we use Shasta County Jail. There isn't a lot as a city we can do to make Shasta County increase the size of their jail, except trying to lobby them as citizens.
Thank you. Toni. Toni?
I do know that there have been numerous attempts by city staff, meeting with the property owner, and trying to work with the city of Redding to try to alleviate this problem, and it just really hasn't gone anywhere. It seems like they move everybody out, and the next week, they're back. They've tried to put up berms to keep the people out, they still get in. And I don't know what the easy solution is. It would be really nice if City of Redding had more personnel to go out and patrol those areas more frequently. I know that our, our animal control officers check on those quite frequently and kind of take account on what's going on. So it's just, I cross my fingers that nothing happens to Windsor Estates as a result of this homelessness problem.
Thank you. Could you pass that down to Dolores? And Dolores, you'll be first on the next question. How can the city of Shasta Lake prepare for dry years when water rights to the dam are often cut?
Wow, that's a good question. It might be a tough one for me. Well, like I said, it is a tough question, and I really cannot give you the answer because I really don't know quite the answer for it. So all I can say, if there's some issue in the city, I'm the type of person, I will do the research, I will look for the answers, and I will absolutely try my best to do what I can to make sure that we're, I do everything for the citizens, to protect the citizens, to provide everything, and that's all I can do. But like, even if I find the answer, we also got to remember that there's also going to be five council members. So even if I brought an issue or a solution, it takes three votes to move anything forward, and they have to agree. If they don't agree, then I can't make, make anything happen. So, thank you.
Tina?
Can you repeat the question, please?
How can you prepare for dry years when water rights to the dam are often cut?
Okay, so what our city's done moving forward, not only just for the drought, for the drought years with water, but we've also helped in regards to the fire aspect of it, and we're doing a lot of mitigation. We're spending a lot of money doing mitigation in all of our sphere of influence areas around the housing, around the perimeters of our own city. In regards to water, we are at the mercy of the Bureau of Reclamation. They're the ones that dole out the water rights. We don't really have a say. Not only that, doesn't matter that the lake is in our backyard, that has nothing to do with it. We don't get unlimited use of that water. So we have to just understand that there are bigger powers than us that get to say what we can and can't do. They choose to, if they say we get a certain percentage of water, they can choose later on that we need to cut that water back, and they've done that to us in the past. So in regards to that, talk to the Bureau of Reclamation. Let them know your concerns about your water rights.
Thank you. Dan?
Tina is exactly correct. We are at the mercy of the Bureau of Reclamation. They own the lake, they own the water. When it gets dry, you can't really fight Mother Nature. A drought is a drought. Now, we are building a raw water tank, a storage tank, with grant money. I'm glad to see that, since it will cost us nothing. I would like to see more cooperation between the city and the Bureau of Reclamation, only for the amount of water we can use in a dry year, as well as upgrading a lot of their old and failing infrastructure, the pumps and the piping that gets it from the dam to where Shasta Lake treats it is all old and failing. And I think they'd probably be willing to fix some of that if we could work with them.
Thank you. Toni?
I remember during one of the driest years, or our last drought, how we were talking at staff meetings about having to go down to health and safety levels, and it was very concerning how it would impact families. You know, maybe a single person can make those type of cutbacks, but families, it was very scary. And I'm glad that we didn't have to go to that level. And I'm going to just tell you that this gentleman next to me knows probably more than most of us up here about this situation, so I will let him take over.
There you go, Greg.
Okay, well, first, the city does have a drought rate program. We have a policy in there. In drought years, we are going to charge more for the people who use more. But there is a key thing. We had tiered rates until last year. Tiered rates, we force people to use less water. And the truth of the matter is, our drought rates are based on what we use in the three unconstrained years. So the more water we use, when there's ample water, the more water we have in a drought year. And that is just the fact. When we have to, we have the ability to buy extra water from McConnell Foundation, but it's $400 an acre foot. Our water from the Bureau is about $100 an acre foot. And when we buy that $400, the people who use more are going to pay a higher rate because we already have implemented a drought rate.
Dolores? You've already answered that question. Could you pass it just down a little bit, teeny bit more? How will you, Tina, how will you ensure that our city council works in a cooperative and productive manner?
I think at this time, since I do sit on city council, we may not always agree, and that's pretty obvious on some of the topics that we have, but I think we are good at having discussion on the dais in regards to what the concerns are, what the issues are, what we're voting on for the people. And I think that with that, we do have a good rapport with each other, and we respect each other in that regard.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, I think that a good rapport with each other and a commonality of spirit is a good thing. Agreeing on everything is never going to happen amongst everyone, and sometimes that's what needs to happen. You don't always need progress for progress's sake. Sometimes the right thing to do is nothing.
Thank you. Toni?
So I'm going to go back to my neutrality. Now that I get to actually have a voice, it's pretty exciting. And I just want to say that I would be happy to serve with any of these people in the city council, including Janice Powell, who is not here. I've had a really good working relationship with them, and we have mutual respect, and that's something that I don't always see on other boards when I watch their videos. So I'm pretty proud of the city of Shasta Lake for having that.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, I think our council is fairly amenable and gets along, but there's an example that things can get tough. We finally passed, got rid of the tiered water rates, and that happened by a vote of three to two, just barely. Why did we have tiered rates? Because Sacramento said we need tiered rates, so we'll use less water up here, so there'll be more water to go to LA. That's like saying, because you drive a Prius, you only have to pay $3 a gallon at the gas station, but if you drive a pickup and you need 30 gallons, you're going to have to pay four because we're going to penalize you. That's the way our water rate was. That's what we got changed, but it was only by a vote of three to two. So the council needs to think and be wise and work together for the best of the community and not for Sacramento.
Thank you. Dolores?
Can you repeat that question again?
That question. How will you ensure that our city council, Shasta Lake City Council, works in a cooperative and productive manner?
Well, it's a little difficult to answer that, but I'll answer it truthful. Sometimes it's very hard, but we also got to remember, we're not there to just to kind of get along. We need to stand up and do what's right for the citizens, even though it takes an argument and discussion where you're going to have to go against your own board, council members, because the citizens, that's what we are supposed to represent. And for me, that is the most important. So I will basically make sure that I actually have, I speak on the behalf of the citizens to make sure that they're getting what they need, because I'm not going to take a position for myself. It's for them. I want to make sure it's, they get treated fair and equal, because in the past, we have board members in the past that they don't get along, and they want to be friends, and that's kind of where it interferes for their, to do their job, because they don't want to cause waves. But you're running into representing the people.
Thank you. Dan, I think you're first next, and I have a microphone right here, so I'll, or you can pass that one up, yeah. What can be done in Shasta Lake City and the area to increase activities for kids and youth in the city? And I know there are some plans already afoot.
I believe, and I really do like the community spirit, events in the park, parades on holidays, kids love parades on holidays. Events in the park are good for local vendors. They can get out there and sell things, meet people, and kids can have activities. Things like that.
Okay. Toni?
I'm very excited about our new parks projects. It was pretty incredible for us to get 23 million dollars to do these projects, and we will have a state-of-the-art skate park right over here. And my hope in the future, which may not be popular, is that the old skate park be repurposed into a splash pad.
Ooh.
Because I've been to a couple of them lately, this last summer, with my friend and her grandkids, and it's just a wonderful thing for kids, especially in our heat.
Yes, thank you. Greg?
I don't think we got 23 million. I think it was 2.3 million, but I think that was good for our skate park, and so we do have a skate park coming. We also have a great little league field. We have a soccer field. We have soccer leagues. I think even Friday night in the park has helped. We have a disc golf place, a field that's coming onboard. So we have a lot of things that a small community can be really proud to push. And then we have Justin Jones in the back, and he's pushing for a pool at Central Valley High School. So that's not all wrong, but it's a big-ticket item, and I think that would be good also. We did get involved on the skateboard park. It didn't come in at bids. Justin and I pushed for city staff to reissue that. They had a requirement that anybody to bid on it had to have five years' experience building a skate park. And we said, wait a minute, don't you think one or two years' experience where we can look at what they did, might get more people bidding on it? Because it's hard to get somebody with five years' experience, and there are only two people bid, and the bids were too high.
Thank you. Dolores?
Can you repeat that question again?
What can be done to increase activities for kids and youth in the city?
Well, the first thing I would do is ask the children what they would like to see, because we, as an adults, we can make decisions for them, and it's not good enough for the kids. I think that we need to go do a survey and ask the children to have, for them to have their input, because I think we, everywhere we go, it's always a park and skate, you know, just a normal thing. We need more. We need to educate our kids. We need to keep our kids out of doing drugs. We got to keep them away from being bored, doing the same thing, because a lot of them, you hear them say, oh, I'm bored, it's the same thing. I had three girls, so I know. So I know how easy they get bored. So I would actually go out door-to-door and speak to kids or do, you know, a whole meeting for the children to get their input. That's what I would do for the children, to bring something different than just the same old thing.
Thank you. Tina?
I myself would like to see a youth center put into the city. We don't have any place for the children to go, other than if it's an outdoor recreational activity. We've got a lot of stuff outdoors, and we're building more things outdoors. As has been mentioned, we have disc golf coming. We have our BMX. My understanding is that did shut down for a little bit, but it will be coming back, so that's great, in case anyone was concerned about that. Well, we do have a lot of outdoor stuff, but we do need indoor stuff. As we know, most of the kids nowadays are indoors. They like to play video games, they like VR headsets, they, you know. So start looking at the things that kids want to do inside as well as outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Toni, you have the next question first, and you've got the microphone. I actually thought this question was pretty interesting. Would you promote a change in our animal ordinance to promote spaying feral cats with trap, neuter, and release?
That's a touchy one. We've gone back and forth, back and forth in the city about that, and I believe there are some state laws that were enacted to kind of make it harder for us to do that. I know that there are several proponents of it in our community, and I don't see a problem with it, but like I said, I think there's some requirements that would have to be implemented. You don't want to trap a cat that you don't know if it's really somebody's cat.
Difficult problem. Greg?
Would you repeat that exactly? What were we?
Exactly what I said was, would you promote a change in our animal ordinance to promote spaying feral cats with trap, neuter, and release?
No, I think we have enough problems. And I'll tell you one thing, I am the one person in here who has adopted a feral cat, and I have Barney, and he's in my barn, and I feed him every week. So I've taken my, I've done my job to taking care of feral cats.
So I just want to add, you're not the only person. I have seven, seven feral cats, all spayed and neutered at my cost. Dolores?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Okay. Would you promote a change in our animal ordinance to promote spaying feral cats with trap, neuter, and release?
Wow. I think, I look at animals almost like human, like, you know, like humans, because they are too, I mean, they're pets, but they're also part of family members, part of their lives. So I would not try to change that, to make an ordinance, to enforce something on an animal, because if you're going to have an animal, I think that's kind of cruel to be doing anything to an animal. So I would not touch that at all.
Thank you. Tina?
I won't make you repeat it. I do believe in responsible pet ownership. I think the only reason we have feral cats is because we have a lot of people who took in animals that decided to not get them spayed or neutered, because maybe they wanted to breed them or for whatever reason. But with that in mind, I don't think a trap, spay, and neuter, and release would work either, because many people who own cats in the neighborhoods, that's their cat, but the cat is outside, and it roams everywhere, and then it ends up coming back home. I understand this has been a massively touchy subject, and it's been explosive on Facebook, if anybody's ever looked into it. But in regards to that, you would not know if the cat you trapped was feral or belonged to someone, so you can't really make those decisions.
Thank you. Dan, you're last on this one.
Yeah, I've never heard of trapping, spaying, and then releasing cats before. Apparently, it's all over Facebook. I don't think I'd support that. Again, you're going to run into problems with trapping people's cats. Spay your neighbor's cat, he's probably going to get mad at you if you didn't want that done. And who's going to pay for it would be another big thing.
Yeah. I've neutered 31 cats at my cat place personally, so I paid for them. All right. Exciting next question. Greg?
So this is about water and planting native trees, using tiered water rates, reducing lawns, hiring an arborist to help consult. You do have lots of green area here, and do you work at all with, I guess, talk to me about that, about native trees and water and?
Well, there's, there's water and there's whiskey. Whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting over, right? Well, when it comes to water, we've had tiered rates, and I- And I've had people come up to me and say, with the tiered rates, I could not afford to have a garden, so I didn't grow a garden this year. We now have a uniform rate, and it's not going to break the bank for you to have a garden this year. And if you've planted fruit trees on your on your property, you need to go out, you need to water them, and they need water so that they can survive. And if you can't afford to buy the water, and you're being penalized at a higher rate, 50% more than what it costs for the city to deliver that water, you're not going to have many trees. I don't think we want to waste water, but we ought to use it wisely, and we need to have a city policy that advocates for wise use of water.
Thank you. Dolores?
Well, I think it's an important issue for me because I've gone door-to-door, and I talked to a lot of people, a lot of citizens who actually are elder people. You know, anything that changes their financial, it's a really hard, difficult thing for them. So for them to, you know, for the citizens not to able to plant their garden or to think about planting trees, it's a cost. It's going to cost them money. I don't even water my trees anymore that often because the more water you spend, the more it's going to cost you. And I think it's pretty sad because now you've got to choose between, you know, saving money or feeding your, you know, watering your trees to get some fruit. So this year, I didn't really plant anything because of how expensive it is. So I think it's very sad that we're going to this stage that pretty soon, we're not going to be able to pay anything.
Tina?
I think that all municipalities, no matter where you're located in California, should look at your native plant location. Because the native plants are what keeps your soils viable, viable. It also helps when, say, there's flooding or any type of fires. Those things are native to those areas, and they are going to acclimate to what is going on in that area. So and they also don't need to use as much water as, say, a redwood tree in your yard that you're trying to keep alive in three-digit weather. So, you know, those are the types of things we need to look at.
Thank you. Dan?
Yes, I also believe that municipalities everywhere should be using native plants. They grow best in that area, that's why they're native plants. At the same time, select them, we don't need a boulevard full of star thistle and poison oak. But they, yeah, trees, they require less water, as this is a dry area for half the year, and they're suited to grow here, so yes, native trees.
Okay, thank you. Toni?
A little over a year ago, the city did a fire reduction program behind my house. I have a green belt behind my house, and I'm shocked at how quickly all those native plants are coming back. And so that just goes to show you that they don't need a lot of water. And yes, municipalities should be planting native plants. And I've changed over to I have a few potted plants now and focusing on succulents that don't take a lot of water.
Thank you. The next question, we've had a request from the audience that we go back to people who are not housed. And so we covered Windsor Estates and said, that's Redding's problem. But let's talk a little bit about the folks that are your problem and live here in the city of Chastel Lake. And what kinds of services are you setting up to provide assistance for them? Dolores is first on this one.
The question was what? Can you?
You have you have individuals who are not housed here in Chastel Lake City. What services are you setting up for them?
You mean?
Or are you going to set up services for them? Are you going to set them up, and if you are, what are they?
You mean for housing?
Or? I mean for those individuals and all the needs that they have.
Well, for me to do to know what I'm going to work on or to provide any service, I like to go and talk to the people before I say, well, this is a service I want to provide. Why am I going to provide something that I think they need? What about us? I'm the type of person, I like to know what they need because it's them that we're going to be representing. We're going to be helping them. So for me to do any service, I have to ask the person. So that's how I would do anything before I take it upon myself.
Thank you. Tina?
Currently, our city, the sheriff's department, has a list of resources that are available to anyone that is homeless. When they go out and speak to them, they go ahead and give them that resource list. They can also go into the Chastel County Health and Human Services Office, that's right here on the boulevard, as well as there's outreach programs that are available to them as well. I sit as the chair on the At Home Committee, which is an oversight committee in regards to homelessness. And we look at all of the entities that are involved in caring for homeless at this time. Unfortunately, municipalities and ours included, our hands are tied by our governor in regards to what we can and cannot do for the homeless. If there is someone you've encountered with a mental illness, that person has to make that decision to be able to go and get the help. If they choose to not do that, your hands are tied. You can't force them into anything. You can't force them to get off drugs, you can't force them to get off of their addictions in any way. All you can do is present the resources, it's their choice to take it.
Thank you. Dan?
As far as as far as any new services or resources, no, I would not spend any money on that. The resources and the services already exist. The Good News Rescue Mission is not at capacity. All of Redding's drug treatment programs are not at capacity. Every deputy, every officer in the state of California knows exactly where all of these people can go, and on every contact, they will be told exactly where they can go for help. They don't want to go there because they have to obey rules. As I said before, this is a 90-plus percent drug problem.
Thank you. Toni? I think, yeah, you are next, yes.
I agree wholeheartedly with Dan's comments and Tina's comments. There are services available, and we continually try to get these people educated on how to get help. And a lot of them just don't want to get help because they either have family that they don't want to communicate with, they don't want their family knowing where they are, or they have substance abuse problems and they don't want to follow rules. So that's, I think that's kind of a circular problem that I don't know how we're going to solve.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, I'm not for I'm not for trying to build any houses like they did at the Lutheran Church there on Chastel View. They built some little tiny homes. I don't really think that's the solution. I think the Good News Rescue Mission is a source available. I had a neighbor with a homeless son, and he was a problem. He's in jail now, he's not a problem for five more years. He did steal my bicycle, and, you know, there's not much you can do about it, but when he was taken to the Good News Rescue, just like Dan said, he wouldn't stay there because he would not abide by the rules.
Thank you. Tina, you're first on the next question, and this will be the last question, and then we'll move to the closing statements. Interesting question. The county has voted to become a charter county. Would you support or promote Chastel Lake becoming a charter city?
No.
That was quick. Would you like? Dan, it's your turn.
Probably yes. The little I know about charter cities is it will push the state back a little bit, give us more freedom to make rules or ignore some of the rules that we now have to follow.
Thank you. Toni?
A resounding no. I came through the ranks, you know, by obeying government code, and there's a lot of reasons that those government codes were developed. And I think that a lot of charter cities have more problems because there's a little bit more freedom, and maybe their boards take advantage of that, and it's not always the best thing.
Thank you. Greg?
I don't see any advantage in us becoming a charter city, but if somebody can sit me down and convince me of some great benefits, then I'll listen.
Thank you. Dolores?
I would not support it. The reason I would not support it because it gives the public officials too much power when actually, I know there's some public officials who actually take advantage of that position, and they abuse it. And then they, it's kind of, for me, it's really difficult to express it because it upsets me. Because there is a lot of public officials now who actually violate multiple laws, and they're trying to make our county to a charter, which they will take control of your rights. They're already doing it now, and they're continuing. You can't make the county to a charter and then go after grants by the state and expect to get grants from the state. You can't have it both ways. And so far from what I've been hearing tonight, not just here, but the previous candidates who were here, they, I noticed that, sorry, but I just want to
Finish up.
I just want to say that I don't think it's a good way to go for our county.
Thank you. So actually, hand that to hand that back down here. I think, Dan, you are technically first, and we're not going to have you doing the closing statement. So I'm going to ask you one more question, okay? And Tina's first. Man, if I'm not, if I don't have my piece of paper right in front of me, I get confused. So who is your hero or heroine and why?
I honestly don't know how to answer that. I don't technically look up or down at anyone. I want to say that I am very much, I look at a lot of different people to understand different perspectives. So in that regard, I can't say that I can focus in on one person and name one person. I just, that's not me. I tend to look at a lot of different perspectives on things to understand stuff.
I think that's a perfectly good answer. Dan?
As far as a person, a human being, I don't know. I look up to a lot of people, police officers, firemen, nurses, doctors, veterans, people who serve, people who put others ahead of themselves.
Thank you. Toni?
I also, like Tina, would have a hard time picking one person. However, when I started thinking about running for city council, my thoughts really strayed to Rod Lindsay and Larry Farr, who are our former council members who are no longer with us, and how much they impacted my life and mentored me. And so they're my city heroes.
Thank you. Greg?
Thank you for that lovely question. I think anybody that has gone and out of their way to help other peoples is a hero. But there's only one man who has ever really gone out of his way to help all of us, and he rose from the dead, and his name was Jesus Christ. So he is my hero.
Thank you. Dolores?
I agree with Greg. God is, should be our number one for me is God. And there's nobody else besides, for me, God. And I will not praise a man or a person. God is my number one. I will not put anything in front of him, period.
Thank you. So now we'll go to closing statements. Closing statements are two minutes. And Toni, you're going to get to go first because we, you got to, you got to open, so I have to let somebody else close first. So Toni's going to close first.
Okay. I'm not running to pursue a career in politics. I'm really wanting to participate in making a difference right here where it matters to me and it matters to you. And I've always believed that leadership starts with integrity and trust, and that is how I would fulfill that role. I look forward to the opportunity to earn your support. I look forward to the opportunity to speak with you. I'm starting up my Facebook page, I'm going to be populating it. You're going to see some funny things and some and some serious things. But I just want to work together for a stronger, brighter future for the city of Chastel Lake. I think we're going in a great direction, and I want to keep the momentum going.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, thank you for all coming tonight. As we go forward, what is important in the next couple of years? Well, I believe that we need to have a water leak amnesty program for little things. We had people come before the council that had $400 water leaks, and under the tiered rates, they were paid at, they were charged at 50% more. The city made quite a profit on somebody's misfortune. We need to have a water amnesty thing. Another big issue coming is the Summit City area is looking at having sewers. And I support sewers for the core area, but I also think there needs to be an opt-out measure for the people that have a functioning septic system that are on larger parcels. They shouldn't be forced onto it. So I think we need to look at that. And as we go forward, though, our council needs to be governed by a conservative council. And it does little good for me to have a great idea and then not get three votes to pass it. So right now, there's one person on the council, and that's Justin Jones, who will often vote with me. And I actually believe that I need to have three votes to pass, like, vote the Summit City sewers or a leak amnesty. And so I am going to recommend that people vote for Toni Coats, Dan Reiniewelski, and Greg Watkins. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say, those are my choices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Dolores.
The reason I'm running is because I believe that the voters, the citizens, need someone who's going to be their voice and be honest with them regardless what, you know, some of the council members or anybody says. You deserve the truth. And I'm not going to be a rubber stamper like the council member that is in presence now at the city council. I'm not reaching out to other people to bring in, to run with me, and knowing when they're in the city for 29 years and never did anything, knowing there was things happening, they could have reported as a whistleblower to know what was going on behind closed doors. And for someone to be running and asking someone to run again to be in the city, I do believe you deserve better. You deserve change. You deserve to know everything. You need someone to protect your constitution rights. If you don't have someone who's going to protect your constitution right, who treats you equally and fair, then might as well vote for these three. Because I'm telling you right now, we don't have someone who's going to tell you the truth. We need to protect our citizens. And if we don't do it now, you might as well start saving your money to pay the higher increase the utility. On top of that, the gateway just put a measure J where it's going to be raising your taxpayers for like $49 or 100 and something a year more. We can't have people continue coming after your money, your hard-working earning money that you work hard to retire. We constantly having people vote and say, well, we have to, we have to do this. No, you don't. We need to stop that rubber stamping. We can't have this. If you do vote, then all I can say, it's on you. You vote, you're going to vote for them to increase everything, and you're going to, you're going to pay the consequences. I'm just letting you know, being honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina?
Well, first and foremost, I'm here for you guys. I'm only here because you voted me in. I hope you continue to think that I'm doing a good job for you and that you will continue to want to see me in the future, work on this council for the next four years. My seat was only two. I was filling Larry Farr's position. With that in regard, I feel that there's a few key components that need to be addressed in our city. One is growth. We are moving in the right direction, but we do need to see more business. Without the business, we don't have the tax dollars to continue doing what we would like to do. The city runs on grants, whether anyone understands that or not. That is where we are. We get a grant for just about everything, including our raw water tank. We get a grant for just about everything, including our raw water tank. With that, I also would like to see more economic development with the businesses in regards to getting incentives for businesses to be in our town. And we don't really have a lot of that right now. And I would like to see more of that. And citizen involvement, it's hard to get community engaged anymore. This town was founded on community engagement many, many years ago. And the people who grew up here and, and understand that, I don't understand how you're not missing that at this point. If we can look at the nonprofits that are out there, it's about the same 30 to 40 people working on multiple nonprofits to make things function within this town. I would like to see more people come out, get involved. I've been saying it for the last two years on city council. After every city council meeting, we have a flyer in our lobby that has nonprofits listed in it. And you can take one hour out of a month, that's all I'm asking, to come out and get involved in something that is outside of your home and help your community in some form or fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan.
Thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you all for coming out. First of all, I don't lie. Second of all, I've never met a tax rate or a fee increase with which I agreed. Past that, I'm not looking to get into politics either. I'm not going to be running for US Senate next year or anything like that. I'm retired and I just want to bring my lifetime of experience and knowledge in public safety to help my friends and neighbors and create a better Shasta Lake.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, give these folks a big hand. It's, it's hard to sit up here and answer all those questions, you know, and you don't know what's coming at you. So I really appreciate your work. Remember that the League of Women Voters has more events coming. We have an event on, let's see, we're going to Anderson on September 19th, the community center there, Anderson City Council. And on the 25th, we're going Riverfront Playhouse, Office of Education. And we do have one event that's going to talk about the propositions that are on the ballot at the Methodist Church on, when?
South and East. Right, South and East.
Oh, South and East Street, yeah. But, yeah, this is what I need right here. This is, this is my piece of paper right here. October 7th would be the date for that. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So those, those options still open for you. I, I am kind of pushing the Shasta County Office of Education because education is a really interesting thing and a really evolving thing right now in the, in the elections. And I think it's important for people to ask the questions and get the answers and, and develop a strong, a strong county board of education. I believe that Dolores Lucero is also a candidate for that board. Is that correct? Yes. So that concludes this event. And we will have a video posted and I, on the website, the League's website. And you can find it in a couple of days. Thank you very much.